This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Veytor City Council. It is July 31st, 2024, 6:05 PM. Roll call.
Mayor Jensen, hi.
Here.
Sheila Goff.
Here.
Jason Daley.
Uh, Jason is not here. He has not contacted us.
Randy Hall.
Here.
Mike Carson.
Here.
Mike Ferguson.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's report, the city council approved street repair projects. They've been approved, of course. We've scheduled to get, we're getting that equipment towards the end of August. So you'll start to see about four weeks worth of construction around town through the end of August and into September.
These are the culverts?
There's a bit of culverts, um, a bit of variety work. So culverts, um, we have a dump truck. We're talking about going to get our own gravel, so we don't have to pay transportation fees. We'll have the dump truck for the month. Different ditch, ditch work and things like that. So.
That's the stuff we were talking about a couple of weeks.
Yep, a whole, a whole bunch of stuff. So yeah, you see a lot of work around town. And then the annual, uh, Washington TIB street grant that we do. Jackson Civil Engineering has agreed to help us with our application at no cost to the city. And so, um, in your packet, there is a, uh, a list of the, a map with the streets that we're going to apply for work for. Uh, these are all streets that are on the, uh, our annual transportation improvement plan that we submit to the state. So, um, no surprises there. Um, and this grant will be at no cost to the city if it's approved by the state. And we'll find out in the fall if we get it. Any council reports? Movies, movie night?
Oh yeah, we had a movie in the meadow and we had about 60 people there.
Out.
It was, it was nice. It was fun. Good time.
Yep.
Lions Club handed out popcorn and we watched a movie.
Great. Any other council reports? Okay, moving on to agenda approval. I do not have any changes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda for July 31st, 2024.
A motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the agenda for July 31st as written. Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Second, Mr. Hall, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for the city council meeting minutes of July 17th, 2024.
A motion, Mr. Parsons, to approve the minutes for July 17th. Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Second, Mr. Hall, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the vouchers for the end of July 2024 at $14,444.30 for a total for July of uh, $81,040.70.
A motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the vouchers as stated. Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Second, Mr. Hall, any discussion? Fair, and all those in, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports, Edna Fund promoting the Southwest Washington Fair.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors and staff. We have with us three young ladies who will talk about the fair. And the fair is coming up the 13th, going to the 18th. And you will receive in the mail an invitation to go to the opening ceremonies. And if you get there before 11 o'clock, opening ceremonies, it's free for you to get in. So if you'd like to save some money, come on in. Oh, you got it.
We got it. We got it in our hands.
Good. And there's a parking. I'll have a lady slip a word over and introduce us.
Hi there, my name is Caitlin Gunther and I'm a Miss Louis County.
My name is Clay Gibson and I am a Lewis County.
My name is Riley Warren and I was kind of Gary Lester.
So how many of you have been to the fair? You've been to the fair? You asked her, Joe, I mean, they have you.
We went last year.
Well, good.
Yeah, we went last year. Yeah, but kids want to go back again because they met all their classmates that they hadn't seen in two months. Apparently everyone goes on the same day, so.
Okay, other councilors? Have you ever entered anything at the fair?
No.
This is your chance. If you have flowers, cucumbers, pumpkins, they're all exceptional there. And it's a pity, yes, they could do that too. I'd like to have Miss Louis County talk about her experiences in the, in the fair.
So I actually raised animals and showed, uh, I raised, showed, sold those animals at our local non-profit fair. I did that for 11 years. Um, and I actually got done with that last year. It was hard to get, um, through that last year because I was actually talking about this at a different council meeting. You made a bond with those animals and also you just learned so many lessons like, um, values and skills throughout those organizations. And so it's a really amazing experience to see those kids go through those processes. But I also just urge you to go to the fair, not only for opening ceremonies and all the other amazing things, but just go in the barn and talk to those kids about what they do because it really just lights them up and makes them super happy. And, um, it gives them confidence in the things that they're doing. And they are all so passionate about those things. Um, and they just love to talk about it. So I just urge you to go do that if you get the chance because it's really amazing to see what the kids do.
Lewis County. So what have you been doing at Lewis County last year?
Well, I have been going to lots of community events and parades. And during the fair week, I was there all six days, I think it was six days. And there are lots of fun events. Like the diaper derby, the pie contest. And the rides. And the ice cream.
Yes, yes. At Lewis County, you want something special for the councilors.
Yeah, I brought cookies for all the councilors. They taste like the stones of the fair.
Thank you. And you said four ingredients?
Yeah.
These may have, well, sure you know.
All there is is sugar, flour, um, cream cheese and butter, and then the jam. It's really easy.
I'm very a master. Tell us what you like about the fair.
Uh, there's so many things to say about the fair. I love everything about it, the rides and the rodeo, flash is favorite here. Um, but yeah, like Caitlin was saying, going and seeing all those kids in the line. Probably enough about the animals. It really just lights up their day and it just makes you feel warm and buzzing inside. It's really amazing.
And first off the presses, we have our rodeo, well, not pamphlet, not pamphlet, that poster. And it's Wednesday and Thursday. So tickets you can purchase online. And you can get your, any other tickets online, you know, pretty much whatever you want to buy, you can do it online, Southwest Washington Fair. Don't have to give this to your clerk so he could put it up somewhere in this case. So any questions of the team?
What questions do other people ask?
I have a question. Can you guys tell me where you're from? I mean, not Louis County, but like what town you're from?
I'm from Chahelas, Washington. I'm Chahelas.
I'm from St. Charlotte.
And I'm from Alaska.
All right.
Thank you very much for coming.
When did you say that rodeo was?
Uh, Wednesday and Thursday.
And Dallas? Yeah.
There's more details on that. Yeah. Poster. So yeah, please come. It's gonna be really good. It gets better every year. Everything else.
Yes, yes, yes.
And there's a former Miss Louis County too. What's your favorite thing at the fair?
Corn dogs.
When I was a baby, our friend, my family's friend was Miss Louis County. And so it's a picture of Miss Louis County holding me when I was this little, little baby. A long time ago. It was a special moment, I guess.
Yes, well, we have been serving Miss Louis County, so I've been serving as the official fair hostess for, I think, almost since the inception of the fair. It seems like it has, yes. So yes, Miss Louis County has been there for many, many, many years. Yep. Yes. School thing, an hospitality, and if you have questions, you can all have our contact information.
All right, thank you so much.
We'll see you there. Thank you.
They attended it.
Thank you. I don't think my city would open ceremonies.
Whole entourage. Well, Ken.
Matt.
It's a hard, tough act to follow.
I know.
Did you bring us cookies?
No.
No cookies, no crowns.
Well, no, the jury knows who I am, but my name is Ken Jawsland. Uh, I've been a resident now, I think, here for nine years, I think, going on, and I've been on the parks board. I think Kelly told me, I think we're running on our third or fourth term, I think. I can't remember how long it's been, a while, so. Anyway, um, so, uh, I live on Seventh Street, right in the corner across from the grade school. And I really, really love the Fourth of July. I think that's my favorite holiday ever. And now that we have the Fourth of July fireworks show right across from my house, I don't have to go anywhere. So next year, the Fourth of July is on a Friday. This year it was on Thursday, as you all know. And I, I think we missed out on drawing people here, uh, for the next, or I think we missed out on audience and I think we missed out on potential people moving here and potential revenue and, and that type of stuff. So, um, I, in my younger days, I was a golf professional. And, um, I started a golf, a tournament. And we, um, started a budget of about a thousand golf, a thousand dollars. And by the time in five years span, I grew the tournament, uh, over 12,000, $20,000, uh, as far as the reason budget. So I would like to, um, and I've been talking with Kristen and the mayor a little bit. I told him about my plan and he said, pass it off to Kristen. And so Kristen and I talked today. I think I would like to, um, help out trying to get a sponsorship for the fireworks. I was told that the fireworks was roughly around $7,000. I think that we can try to get that covered. My thoughts was to try to get the fires covered as far as the money, as far as the sponsorship. And then we can invest that money into other aspects of the Fourth of July stuff. I have one idea for sponsorship was, and I know this is gonna get down to legal stuff. So this is where I would like to talk with you guys and, cause I don't know if this is gonna go very good, is, um, like a brew club or a bar or, cause those are all, those guys got lots of money and they're always looking to sponsor stuff. I know having alcohol at the school might get into some touchy stuff. So I don't know where we're at as far as legality there. I don't know if we could get some type of pass or something like that. I also thought that I would like to try to talk with the Boss Hogs in Windlock. And having them as a sponsorship or a co-sponsorship type of thing.
I heard they closed down.
My wife just got done saying that yesterday to me and I said, there's no way that place.
They, they closed down. They only cook their meat up there now and they have a food truck in Longview.
So the.
And they just do catering.
That's it?
Oh, well, maybe they could bring their food truck here.
Okay, yeah. I mean, if they could bring their food cart there. And I would like to try to get some other food carts there also. And, and really, because I mean, Lake Side Jewett has food carts and all sorts of stuff all week long. I mean, I don't think we should have it all week long, but, um, cause we don't have the attractions and stuff. But maybe all day long, we could have attractions going there. And, and I mean, the school has plenty of, if they keep letting us have the rented or using the space, I think we could potentially really grow this thing, especially the next three to four years with the Fourth of July being around the holiday, around the weekend. So, um, like I said, I would love to, I love marketing, I love calling, I sit on my butt all day long, drive truck. So I have plenty of time to call people and talk to people on the phone. So calling people and organizing that type of stuff. Getting flyers made, um, now I was, I've been bugging Kristen for the last three days because we're 11 months away from Fourth of July. I know it's, it's, people say that around Christmas time all the time, but it's, Fourth of July is gonna be here. And like I said, I think we really kind of missed the boat on getting people here and not having the publication out as far as it being, uh, I mean, I think we're getting more and more people all the time and the fireworks were awesome. So, and I mean, I had lots of people at my house. On one note on that thing though, is how much I do love, and you guys might not like this, but on, uh, on come the Fourth of July, uh, I will not be available because I love the Fourth of July and I want to spend it with my friends and family. So up to the Fourth of July, I will be available and helping get this thing going. But Fourth of July, I'm not going to do it. It's, it's too important to me and stuff. So anyway, I would like some leadership as far as like what you would like to do. Kristen was concerned that we didn't know, have, wanted to have our ducks in a row as far as what we were gonna do and what we were gonna allow and all that type of stuff. So I said that I would come and talk. I guess there's one person also that just moved into town that interested in doing something, uh, along with the Fourth of July or trying to help. I tried getting her name, but Kristen said that she wouldn't give it to me yet. So we started figuring out what's going on.
I think it'd be good to get a Fourth of July committee going and.
So yeah, this opens it up to a kind of a larger question for council. How big do we want this to get? Right now, you know, we had a couple of food vendors, our local nonprofits there. Several hundred people show up to the event. It, it, it's a question, right, for council? What, what do we envision this being? Do we, do we want to turn it into something much larger? Is that venue really appropriate at that point, you know, when we start getting that big?
Is it something that we hand, excuse me, Joe, is it something that we can hand over to Parks to promote and, and handle?
I was gonna kill who's here tonight. Who's on the line? I don't know if, um, Parks is inappropriate group for that.
We could just have, they're, they're pretty busy already with the other little things they work on.
And they just got the climate change.
And, um.
We could just have a committee.
I think Fourth of July, if, if, Fourth of July, regardless of what we, what we decide to do, we do need to have a handful of non-city employees that, um, are willing to be boots on the ground the day of. Like for instance, this year, you know, the day of, we had, um, the vendors showing up and we didn't have anyone there yet. And they were asking the Fourth of July fireworks guys, hey, where do we put our booths? And then they were giving them my number. I was like in Centralia or something. And, and so we need to have more organization. We need to have people there. And so, and again, that leans towards this committee idea. Especially if we wanted to get anything larger than what it is right now. It can't just be city hall.
My feeling is it's been a phenomenal show and it draws a lot of people. I think that we should be able to, one, get sponsors for it. Two, get vendors at it that can make money and bring money into the city. And also, um, make the city money off of that event. It's, it should be big enough to do that and at least pay for itself really soon.
Can I make one comment? I think just being here for the last couple of years, we have a couple of different committees and we have the same people on those committees.
It's the STP, the same ten people who do everything.
Yeah, so it, I, I feel like for this to move forward, maybe go out to the community. Maybe people have another passion for the Fourth of July that they'd want to be a part of it that isn't the same people. Because they're kind of overextended when you think about May Day and SDP and Lions Club, all the different activities that they do throughout the year, the Christmas stuff. I mean, if, maybe if we go out to the community and see if other people are interested in this Fourth of July. Because honestly, without volunteers, I don't see how we're gonna get this. Because it's, I mean, you're willing to help, but then come Fourth of July, you're not available.
I agree, but if we have Ken to head it up.
Yeah.
But we should be able to take anybody that wants to help.
Right, I'm just saying, if you put it out there more to people saying.
Need to volunteer, I mean.
A new committee.
There, I mean, doing just what I said is, I, I mean, I need help as far as designing the flyers. Cause I'm pitiful on design on that type of thing. But I'm sure there's somebody here in the community or at city hall that can help design that. In that, out and about, I could help doing that. That would be no problem. Calling, that's no problem doing that. Getting people set up at the, I mean, I guess I could volunteer for a little bit on.
And that's, that's kind of where I was kind of, that is like, all of that can be handled.
Yeah.
When you're talking about day of, just like this last year, you have one person getting the cans out, doing the barricades, doing, you know, talking to vendors, doing this. And it's their day off. It's their holiday. So, you know, that's where I'm thinking we need more people that are willing to work day of. Because we have more than enough talented people and volunteers and helpful people to get it put together and get the sponsorship. But we don't have somebody day of. And then my second suggestion would be to not have like a beer garden on school property. We do have other areas.
I, yeah, Kristen and I did talk about like the corner lot there that we just purchased. The only problem with that that I have, that I'm sure that they're gonna have is if I'm giving you a thousand dollars or $2,000, I want my name out there and I want to be wherever the people are gonna be. And if I'm clear down here, how am I getting my, right, money back? And that's why I thought about, is there a way to somehow offset the rules?
Just Ruben, did you have a, a comment?
One thing to consider is this last Fourth of July was amazing. There's a lot of people here. There's a ton of people parked on the state highway. A lot of those people were parked in higher corrected. You know, as you advertise this, as you bring more people into your, your community, also creates other issues you gotta consider. One, traffic coming in and out, people parking, where are they gonna park at? Whose house are they gonna park in front of? Where, where are all these people gonna go to? The other part of it is, is you're like on the state highway, have a beer garden. And you're drawing from a lot of people from outside of the community. You bring in a lot of, um, interesting concepts that you're gonna have to address and how to deal with it.
The, the beer garden was just honestly, cause that's usually draws the most attention and gets the most money and stuff like that. So we don't have to do that. I mean, if I could find a restaurant or some food carts that could, I don't care who gives me the money. I, I really don't. I mean, it was easy when I was around the golf tournament because I had three casinos right within 15 miles of me. So I would golf in casinos, gambling is, goes hand in hand. So that was, that was a slam dunk for me. So I think, you know, I think it's just, there's lots and lots of ideas and there's things we hadn't even thought of yet, you know, different ways to, you know, if you want to attract people, you know, like a beer garden, but not have a beer garden, you know, what, what is that? What, what brings people, you know? So, you know, again, the committee is, is really kind of the, the direction that, that we need to put together. And so, um, Ken's obviously willing to be, be part of that. And so, and we have some other folks in town, um, but we need more. Yeah, so definitely spread the message and, um, you know, like when you guys would want to start getting together and having, having meetings? Like I said, we're over 11 months, we're only got 11 months.
You're itching for the next one already.
I am, seriously.
Yeah.
I, I, I want to get this going and I don't think it's gonna be that hard to get things going. I just need to have some direction, this guidance from, from you guys of what we can do. Kristen said something about, um, today about you guys want to try to recruit the, some money for the budget. And then, uh, do we allow, when the vendors come in, do we, I guess she said something about, and you probably know about the fee schedule and stuff like that. My thinking all the time is, is with our little community is, is trying to get people drawn here first of all, and then we'll worry about the money later. But.
I think with the vendors from this last year, I mean, it's, it's hard because we're putting a lot of money out there for this event. And then we get $10 or $25. And if we only have five, I mean, we're not making.
And that's my whole point is, is what's the reasoning and given something I spend $10 on, I'm not gonna, I'm getting wrong, Jeff, because I don't know.
See, I kind of think a little bit different.
They raise their money for the fireworks. You know? That, that's something that you're like a club in.
Yeah, that's probably.
Paying for, right? So, so you could put the monies out there, but the one thing about the beer garden, who's responsible for the license and the insurance to have that beer?
Well, that, yeah, that's, that's something that we need to, that we need to talk about and.
I mean, is that something that the city's gonna have to put up or will be the vendor itself that's supplying that?
I know that, I know that the, uh, we're getting ready to do a bull riding in Castle Rock. And one of the local bars is going to set up the, the, uh, taproom or whatever they're calling it there. But there was a whole process that they had to go through to be able to do that.
I know when I did a, um, a cornhole event on the street for, um, my son's graduation party, it was, it was our, we had to get the insurance. It was tied to one of the local restaurant bars, but we had to get the special insurance. And that was just working the street.
One other thing as far as, sorry, I mean, what kind of times are we bringing in? I mean, are you gonna bring it, are you carrying it towards families or carrying it towards kids or are you carrying it towards, you know, that? I mean, right now, you're going out there to the Fourth of July and you have all these smudges, kids running around, there's people running around. You start thinking about adults with beer gardens. Are they bringing their kids? Are they watching their kids?
I think that, um, well, I'm kind of biased on it because, um, I ran, I did the kids pay to plays for so many years. Parents spend money on their kids. Yeah, they want their beer, but little Johnny's sitting there going, oh, yes. So if you could get. So if you could get like a, a power jump there, it would probably have a huge line and the bounce houses and things like that. And make it a full day event so it's not trying to cram in an hour before the fireworks.
Yeah, that was my, I would like to, I mean, I think I would like to have it at certain at eleven o'clock or something like that.
Yeah, it should be like a.
All day thing.
A fair night event.
Yeah, I would have, I would like to have it all day long. So, all right, so we could, we could workshop this all night long, right? Idea is that there's going to be a committee. And so start spreading the word about trying to get folks that want to help this. And then we can have some official meetings about it, committee meetings. And where the committee can start breaking through different, different, different ideas of how to do it. In the end, you know, it's kind of up to the council, how big do we want to get it? Do we want to go to the beer garden route? Do we not want to go to the beer garden route? Now, these are things that the council needs to kind of think about and decide. You know, is that the appropriate venue for it anymore? You know, Ken probably doesn't want to have, see it moved to Nick Murphy Park because it won't be crossing your house anymore.
I think that's the perfect venue. I think that the.
But then, you know, it's not in the center of town anymore. But Nick Murphy, you could do different things where you could control traffic better. You could have parking, you could charge ten dollars a car to park, you know? There's just different things that you could do. But it does, it changes the atmosphere of the, of the event too.
You can also do like Alice County does and do the beer garden the night before.
I, I just need some direction as far as can I, can I start trying to look for sponsorships? Or can I start doing this? And, and that's what I need to know. If I can do this or are you guys going to talk about it and then get back to me? Just what does the council think? Can you maybe start? Is this, is the sponsorship kind of thing, the direction we want to look at?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I'd say yes.
So that's kind of a direct. I mean, I'm obviously not going to say start sending people up. I mean, I'm going to start calling and seeing what type of. Yeah, interest. Interest I get and, and because I got to throw out some money and see what they're interested in, in throwing to us. And then, and then I can start reporting back to you guys and saying, okay, this is what I got. And, and then I want a list of some food carts and start calling on them. Because I think those guys, food carts are getting so popular right now that they're starting to plan out their summers now. Because I called, I called a week prior to Fourth of July and two out of the five were already booked. So that to me thinks that there, these guys are already planning. Yeah, well, let's get you a team too, so that you're not on your own and then you can come up with different ideas. And.
Going to be a city thing? Because like right now, it's just cities. So if we have a committee, will it be like May Day? It'll just be.
So I'm, I'm envisioning it to be an extension of, of the city, not, not a, a private groupism taking it on. Now, I suppose if they got that with it.
Volunteers, can I go on the newsletter that goes out with the water rail every month?
Yeah, because I mean, I think for, for the foreseeable future, until it's of sufficient size where it can afford the seven to ten thousand dollars to pay for itself, it kind of needs to be under the city umbrella.
What, what is required of a vendor that comes in if it's from a different county? Who? Any vendor that takes a trial?
Different vendor? It's just, they have state business licenses, so it's just as long as they're in the state, that's fine. So, well, let's get you some people first and then you can, and then you get some brains going. Maybe you could get enough games and carnival type things going on that that would, that could bring in a significant amount of revenue too. So lots, lots of different ideas. Okay, well, I'll, I mean, I'll continue to check back if you guys need to report stuff. And but can I call some on sponsorship? All right. And then. And then in the meantime, let's kind of find some people that want to be on this committee that aren't doing anything else, at least. With our three or four city groups that we have right now. Okay. And then we'll try to get you a meeting, hopefully have your first meeting beginning of September kind of thing, something like that. Cool. Okay. Thank you for your head. Thank you for letting me talk. Public comment, any members of the public have anything to comment on tonight?
Well, you know, I guess.
Because you're the public.
So there was something.
Could be public too.
There was something that Ferguson was talking about because there's a big thing going around about hiring a police officer here and stuff. And I guess years ago, we used to have a city team that would go out and patrol the city. At, in the area, we had a big garage sale and there was a couple of guys from Riderwood that did that. They had it one night a week that they would just patrol their little town like that. It was something that maybe we could start looking at again that, that helped the sheriff out and our neighbors to feel safer.
Yeah, four years ago, three or four years ago, there were a few guys that got together and they were kind of patrolling the streets vigilante style. And we ended up putting them in contact with Sheriff's Department. Sheriff's Department gave them a lot of good information about what they can do, can't do, shouldn't do. Public neighborhood watch kind of information. So Sheriff's Department had a lot of good resources for them too. They did it for a while and then it kind of phased out, I think, being up all night kind of, kind of got to them. I know online, they claimed that the city told them to stop doing it, which is not the case. We didn't tell them to stop doing it at all. In fact, I had conversations with them. Quite, quite the contrary, wanted them to keep going if they could. So, yeah, no, that'd be, that'd be great. You know, again, takes a team that wants to do it. The city would back them up and I'm sure the Sheriff's Department would give them lots of good information. But who? That's what it comes down to.
Yeah, his size.
Yeah, very willing to work with someone that, on, on that, but just need some folks that want to do it. Yeah, it was good. I mean, and they got noticed because they were shining flashlights at people's houses and people were calling the Sheriff's Department.
The kimono was upset because they were putting their flashlights under their windows.
Yeah, they were getting a little, a little forward.
Not so much the community, a few individuals, let's put it that way, kind of upset.
But they did, I mean, like there were, it was like a car that was in town they didn't recognize and they literally chased it out of town. It was getting a little, was getting to be a little bit much. But that's why we ended up putting them in contact with Sheriff's Department so that they could try to keep themselves out of trouble.
I ran out of Riderwood and looked at that guy that's on that trail out there and talked to them and see how they run theirs and stuff. But it could help, you know, because there was some vandalism and some stuff out of cars and stuff. I guess my neighbor had somebody jump over his fence.
Yeah, again, it's just, I think, you know, it's just. People talking about watching.
And I think the other thing is people report stuff, not on Facebook, but report it. And everybody's like, oh, I don't want to waste the cops' time and I can't believe we don't have any law enforcement here and wah, wah, wah. But if you don't report it, they won't know. And I've said this before, I caught a lady looking through a window at the church at a car, got the license plate as she left. A hundred and eighty-six cases got closed because of that one license plate. They, they found something illegal, they got them a warrant to their house and they found all of the stolen products. So report the stuff, even if it's little, report it. Because if, if he, if a deputy goes into a house and he's looking for a chainsaw and there's like five or six weed eaters there, he can run those numbers. This, I know steel because mine is on the list somewhere. They have numbers and all of a sudden, all these different cases are closed or they, nothing happens at all because nobody reported it. Oh, it was just a bicycle and, you know, so report this stuff.
See something, say something.
Yeah, let them know because they can't do their jobs. I, I don't care if we had our own police department because you're going to have one guy over here on this side of town and all the criminals are going to be over there and bouncing back and forth. So anyway.
So I have a question, yeah, I, I think we're, the city council and cities are in support of, of the idea. If some folks wanted to come forward to start working on it.
Well, I'll go talk to the guys out there right away, see how they run theirs and see how they get their volunteers and stuff. Because I mean, if you put a few hours in once a week, you know, protect your community and help these guys, you know? It's worth it.
Yep. Cool, thank you.
And I'm retired, I can stay at that.
All right, any other public comment?
No, I think I'm done.
All right, moving on to city business. Item number one, council to consider ordinance twenty twenty-four oh seven, complete streets program. Why do we need a complete streets program? There are, currently this year, there's thirty million dollars in the state grant pot for pedestrian access and, and pedestrians, bicyclists, all that kind of stuff. This would include sidewalks and crossing guards and all kinds of stuff like that. Until you have a complete streets program, you cannot access that money. You can't submit for grant funds. And so. And it's the same agency, the TIB, where we've gotten our chip seal from, where we got our A Street project from, where we're applying for all these other streets here in town. It's the same group, same grant organization. It's fairly easy to get money from them if you ask for it. And so that's why I put forward this complete streets program so that we can even ask for these, these, these monies. If you, if you've taken a look at it, hopefully you have. It's a lot of information about things we will try to do. It's not necessarily things that we have to do. You know, we'll, we'll attempt and we will try to keep these different things in mind when we have projects, but we're not necessarily obligated to.
After considerate review, I would like to approve ordinance, motion that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh seven, a complete streets program.
Good motion by Mr. Ferguson to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four oh seven for the complete streets program. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second on Mr. Parsons. More discussion? Have you been to talk about it more?
Yes.
You get the gist of it?
No, talk more.
Talk more.
Is it? I just want to know if I'm going to have to pay for a sidewalk in front of my house.
Oh, no.
This gets, you know, going and everybody else has one and then says kid. That's kind of what happened in neighborhoods, so.
Well, I mean, no, right now, let's say for instance, let's say for instance, the city did get a grant, did get grants for sidewalks. Probably C Street wouldn't be the first place where we'd put it. But let's say we did, you know, we don't have any mechanisms to charge people for sidewalk maintenance in any of our codes right now. That's not, that's not part of this. You know, that doesn't say that the city couldn't sometime in the future start having charges for something like that. I know that other cities do, but that's not what this is about. So right there in the beginning, it talks about the vision. The city of Vader shall, to the extent practical, scope, plan, design, construct, operate and maintain appropriate facilities with the safe accommodation of pedestrians, wheelchair users, bicyclists, motorists, transit vehicles and users, emergency responders, freight haulers and people of all ages and abilities in all new construction, retrofit or reconstruction projects. Through ongoing operations and maintenance, the city of Vader shall identify cost-effective opportunities to include complete streets practices. And so then the rest of this goes on to, to talk about ways to make those visions a reality. It's kind of a, a dreamy bit of legislation, right? Where it's, it's things to aspire to. But that's what the state wants, to be able to access these pots of money. So. There are questions about it? It's actually relatively short, you know, it's really only the three pages.
And it's my understanding that it's very similar to our roads management plan that we have, that it's a plan. We do what we can, and we, it's simply funded through grant funding, right? It's not anything that we have to budget for, it's nothing that we have to do. It's just a roadmap for where we could go with things, right?
Yep, yep, it's, it's just a direction, things to keep in mind when we go out making, if we ever do make these, make these infrastructure items.
Sounds a lot like a comprehensive plan, a part of it.
It's similar too, you know, comprehensive plan is a long-range planning document where we need to have it.
If something comes available, like a grant or something.
But we don't necessarily need to do it.
Yep.
But if you want to be able to do certain things and get funding, it needs to be in that plan.
Yep.
But you can change it, you can add to it. Again, kind of a visionary kind of document. More discussion? Questions? If there's no other discussion, all those in favor of ordinance twenty twenty-four oh seven, the complete streets program, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, motion carries, thank you. The deadline to apply for funding, I think, is April ninth this year. And so we won't be able to apply until next year, but we will apply every year going forward after that. If you've got any pedestrian related projects that you'd be interested in, let us know.
Eighth Street has a lot of pedestrians on it.
I haven't had, never mind, I'll say it at the end.
Okay, moving on to item number two, council to discuss Lewis County UGA come in as the I L A. And so we talked about it a little bit in the past, where I at least let you know it was coming up. I know, I know you've all seen it in your email, we got it weeks ago. So my question tonight is, is this something we are interested in doing? If it is, I'll start discussions with the county about getting an interlocal agreement drafted between us and the city. And then eventually it would come back to council for review. It's a big deal and this is, this is why it's a big deal. So right now, our urban growth area, that would be, well, I think you've got a, there is a map in here that shows the urban growth area. The urban growth area was set in place back in two thousand and five or seven, so before all of our time. Yeah, I think it's this one right here. All the colors didn't come out very well. But it's, our urban growth area is everything from Annanon Road south on Winlock Vader. And then, so everything, pretty much, every, everything to, right to the left of this map, if you were to look at Winlock Vader, that's our UGA all the way down to the Olaqua, where the edge of the city limits bumps out down there. The other chunk of our UGA is all of Enchanted Valley down there, the residential area down there. And then there's a little bit up by the water plant. There's only one home up there, it's that log cabin that's been being built. They're doing some business up there of some kind. So that's our UGA. Right now, it just sits there, the county manages it in its entirety. We don't have any say in the urban growth area whatsoever. A good example was Dollar General. The city had no input on that as, at all. The county just authorized it, permitted it, and it, and it went in there. They didn't talk to the city at all. This interlocal agreement would change all of that. So for starters, the city would take over all building permitting in that area. So any building permits in the UGA would come here, which will benefit the city in revenue from building permits. We get to keep that revenue. Also because of that, part of this is that our regulations start taking effect in the UGA. And so basically, if it doesn't fit into our city's long-term plan, we don't have to allow it. There are some other things that will be our responsibility. For instance, I believe it says in there that streetlights would be our responsibility in the U G A. Of course, there aren't any streetlights. Sidewalks, urban gutters, again, there aren't any, but they would be our responsibility. And stormwater management. There's no active stormwater management in that area, but there are ditches. And so it may be the city's responsibility to maintain the ditches in the U G A. In this agreement, it talks about having a conversation with Lewis County Public Works while we put this I L A together. And so maybe the city would not necessarily take over public works-related street items in those areas initially. That would be part of the contract that we that we wrote up with them. So those are the big things. Oh, another thing would be fire investigation services. So if there's a fire in that area, the fire department responds. And they hire an investigator, which generally is a couple thousand dollars. The city were responsible for fire investigation services. Luckily, that's the thing that doesn't happen very often. We do have a budget for fire investigation services already because it's our responsibility within the city limits to take care of any of that. So, you know, the direction with this is that the city starts managing its, its, its U G A. And then eventually, over the course of five to twenty years, the city does eventually annex the whole thing in. And part of that in here is it talks about the city giving them a plan to actually make that a reality. So right now, the city has a U G A and we're just like holding on to it like a I don't know, a thing that you hold on to a long time and don't get rid of, whatever that is. You're not supposed to do that. You're supposed to, the whole point of the U G A is that you grow into it. Otherwise, you give it back. So, so we would have a plan for that to happen. There's a lot of stuff in this document. It's not a lot of fluff. It's all good stuff. Hopefully you got a chance to look at it. What are your thoughts?
Well, it's homes, also people that live there. How do they feel? I mean, they're just gonna all of a sudden be in Vader city limits and.
They won't be in the city limits.
But when they.
They're already in our urban growth area. It's, it will not become the city within the city limits. There would just be management from the city of the U G A.
And what would the city get at that?
So the city gets a few things. The city could get revenue for building permits. The city things, for instance, like the Dollar General being permitted without any, any consideration from the city. The city would have consideration for things like that now. So we would have an input and voice over that kind of thing.
Would we get their sales tax?
No, because it is not what, it would still not be within the city limits.
Yes, they're mid-step.
It is. Yeah, it's a stepping stone. And it's really written in a way that kind of gets the cities, you know, bigger cities not so much. Little cities, it kind of gets our feet wet in letting, keeping, letting us always remember the U G A is there. We're supposed to grow into it. We're dealing with it on a regular basis. And it's not just this thing that's that we forget about.
Does the property owners, I don't know what the sizes are in the U G A, but do they if he's, if somebody's got two acres out there, can they divide that into city-sized lots?
Yeah, so there are actually things in here about that. Oh, and code enforcement will now, instead of just being Lewis County's responsibility, it will be some co-management back and forth. Where is city shall provide a five, ten and twenty-year schedule for annexation for the U G A. So it won't stay U G A forever. Lost it. And by the way, this, this document, this document came from the county. It was bounced around between all of the cities and all of the cities that already had input into it to come up with this final draft. So pretty much, most of the cities are probably gonna sign on to this. Where is the?
Page ten.
There's slides. It talks about subdivisions, subdividing ones.
Page ten, C.
Yeah, and since we're doing, since the city's taking over the building permitting, any applications for subdivisions will be submitted to the city, which is good because then again, if there's anything big going on in the area, the city should have input, not just the county. Now, there's some other things in here about need an index for this thing. Here it is, page five, section four. This might be more the kind of things you were thinking of. So this would be the regulations on septic systems within the U G A and wells within the U G A.
Can you put that up on the screen, Joe?
Yeah, you've, um, yes. Yeah, I sent this out a couple of weeks ago, Mike, if you check me. I guess I have it all right here in this nifty little packet online.
I have a question, Joe.
Yeah.
For all those people and the real have they been notified that if we agree for this, that there's perhaps
So Bobby, you're kind of broke up there. It sounds like you weren't, you were wondering if, if the people in the U G A had been notified in any way about this agreement. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
No, they have not. And in fact, I don't believe there's anything even into the future that require them to be notified because they already exist within the urban growth area of the city. So that it's kind of a given that the city grows into an urban growth area. You don't create an urban growth area unless you grow into it.
And it's a
Permitting process, there's somebody in the town that's different than the city. And if there's a grant on it, they have to go through the city's permitting process.
That's correct, yeah. It would be, yeah. So, so eventually what would happen, what would probably have to happen is anytime, I mean, some, some communication could go out to them or you know, inevitably what would happen is if they ever went to the county to get a building permit, the county would just say that Vader is the permitting authority in your local area. So go to Vader for your permits.
Thanks for pulling that up, Joe. I appreciate it.
Yeah, there was another section here that had more about yeah, right here, on the page before.
I did read most of it, but I guess I didn't notice that part of it.
Yeah, so that's the big one. You know, there's a lot of this in here. I don't want to say it doesn't apply, but on a, you know, day-by-day basis, nothing really changes, right? The big change is that the city permitting stuff happening within the city. And that enables us to have a say that what's happening in our, in our urban growth area. And there's, and there's a lot of co-management between county and city as well for enforcement and some other things. And so instead of, instead of an us and them thing, we're working together. So I have to say, I'm an advocate for this. I think this is the right direction to go. I think it gets this, the, it it, it will be a revenue boost for the city overall, I believe. And it will, the folks that live in the urban growth area will, at that point, you know, start to realize that the city is here and taking control. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a viable entity for them to deal with. And then over the course of however many years the city decides to do, you know, we do grow into our urban growth area instead of just holding on to it as a, like a pet, you know.
When you take it back to the water one day, no matter where growth there is, would that revenue come to the city or will it be county?
So the water is a district, and so it's independent of whether it's city limits or urban growth area. And so revenue stays with the district regardless. So it doesn't matter who has the water system, they get all the revenue. So that's another thing for folks to remember too. You know, half of this area that's urban growth area isn't exactly rural. Enchanted Valley is fully on Vader water already. They're already on city utilities. They're part of the city infrastructure already. They are part of Vader. The water system actually goes all the way over to the river through all those houses out on the other side of West Side. The water district's huge. The water goes all the way down to Winlock Vader already. It already exists there. And so these areas are already city. They're just not within the city. So my question for council is, is this, is this the direction that we should, that we should go? And if so, I can start having conversations with Lewis County to draft a interlocal agreement for council consideration.
Can, can we table this for the next meeting so that I can review it a little bit more before I can get behind it, Joe?
Sure, can always table it. It's, it's, it's interesting to read through and then think about kind of the future of the city and what this means. Let's say, like Mike was saying, it kind of just stepping to, to bringing in all those other areas.
I like the idea myself.
There is, I can say there's already interest in our urban growth area for development. They come to city hall and they say, you know, we want to be in the city limits. And we want to develop. Right now in the county, they can't because they're subject to county county development rules. This won't necessarily change that, that, that point, but you know, if they'll.
Closer to it.
But it's a stepping stone from getting there. And the city can start managing it and working together with the county on that. And the citizens in those areas too, right? Then the citizens in those areas will start coming to city hall for their permitting, or if they're, if a new house is gonna be built in Enchanted Valley, they come to city hall. So. All right, any other discussion tonight? Okay, I'm, I'm excited for it. So hopefully, hopefully council approves of it and we can talk about it next meeting. Last item on the business, council to discuss moving stop signs from A Street to Ninth Street. Whose idea was this?
Aaron said that I believe he's talking with, could have been my person or Jason Daly about the possibility of moving the stop sign.
Which stop sign?
Yeah, on A Street.
From A to Ninth.
So there's two on A on each side of, and then nine. We, we went and drove by and if you take away one, then that's just gonna give them a straight shot to be able to hit A and go like they do on B here. We need to stop them on B too, because they hit B and go just head on.
So I don't know, I don't know. I haven't gotten.
I was confused. I was confused as well by this.
So is the idea that we make a straight through and Ninth, well, Ninth already has a stop sign.
I could probably bring it up the next one when Jason's here, because I don't.
Yeah, Jason and they were, they were starting to talk about it. I was a little fuzzy on it, but they were saying that the straight through, if you're going to the sewer plant, there's only one stop sign. All the other roads stop going.
Yeah, I guess you don't have one until you hit like the very end of A Street and then there's a stop sign.
Yeah, all the, all the roads are stopped from going on to A Street. Except the very last one, and then you stop there or something like that, but.
Okay, sounds like we can talk about this next meeting. It's not.
Transfer table it.
It's not, it's not tearing the city apart. It's not one of those things. It's not the, it's not the stop sign issue.
No.
It's not that pressing. Okay, then we'll talk about that in our next meeting as well. Elected official comments. Any elected officials have any comments?
Okay, I've got something here. I have had somebody talking to me about a jake brake sign on the highway, and they really want it. And I really vocalized this to get it here. And as I drove down the other day, I said, what the heck is that sign? And that looks like a new sign. I wonder what it says. It's a whole freaking paragraph on a sign this big.
So we finally got it done. Now your thing is too small.
It's I didn't, I've never seen that before. It's like the whole R C W on there. All we need is no jake brake. So nobody's gonna read it. And, and that person has not called me yet, but I saw it and I'm like, are we kidding ourselves? Am I kidding me? Because I'm on the city council, so I'm taking.
We copied the verbiage from other ones that we've seen, so.
Oh, you've seen that one? Really? Now, were they the same size or were they the big ones?
I, I don't think it was a big one. They're generally fairly small. They're generally not huge. How big do you want it?
It's like, that's what we really wanted you to know. I just wanna, I, I, I believe we just want a general.
Get a model, get a, get some mockups in here at the next meeting.
Yeah.
A general no jake brake sign is what I believe.
Yeah, it says something like no, no engine brakes or compression brakes by, by city, by city ordinance. It says something like that, right?
City ordinance. Look at that one right there. That is beautiful.
Now, isn't jake breaking, isn't that a, like a slang? Isn't, it's not necessarily the.
We're supposed to have a knuckle jake brakes anyways.
Yeah, they're supposed to. There was actually one, and I, I don't, me myself, I don't care if I hear a brrr every now and then. I imagine if I lived over there, I would.
Yeah, it was for the three residents and there's some farm animals up there on the corner and stuff like that.
It's the top of the hill. It's the top of the hill. That's why you need to have that sign there. It's the top of the hill.
Yeah, and we put the sign there. There is a sign there, but I think we should look into a common sense sign.
Okay.
Sorry. I just know that I'm gonna be hearing it, so I'm. I just know that I'm gonna end up hearing it, so I'm trying to get ahead of this.
Jake breaks is old school, it's the engine brakes.
Engine brakes, yeah. But there was one that went down the other day, and I was at my house, and I was going, what the heck is that? And he rode that thing all the way down there.
At my house.
Yeah, I bet. See, so it's not just the three people and the farm animals, smarty pants.
Be careful, you ask for a big one, you're gonna get a big one. Good size of that tabletop over there.
I am bad at sign sizing, so, but I know that I can't read whatever that says out there.
The thing about the signs is you have trucks that use the engine brake, you don't hear them. Then you have these trucks, law trucks coming down that hill, and instead of a muffler, they have what's called a resonator on them. It makes that loud noise, so it's, it should read some non-muffled engine brakes. City ordinance.
You guys come up with what you want on the sign, and we'll get your sign. No, 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 you're, you're, I know, you're a truck driver, you've got experience. I have no idea what I'm asking for.
Just one that says.
Shut that thing off.
And if you say no engine brakes at all, then that, everybody has to stop it. And you can hear them coming down that hill, calling it along.
Unmuffled, no unmuffled.
No engine brakes.
No engine brakes.
No engine brake or no unmuffled engine brake?
No, just put down there, no engine brakes, and that contributes to everybody.
Okay, but you wanted to allow those folks to have a muffler.
One guy will say, well, mine ain't loud, you know, just no engine brakes.
Okay.
And they don't need it coming down that hill into the city anyway, because they're they're going out to get their logs, and they don't use it to go up the hill. And when they're coming down Level 6, they're from the top of the hill there. They just wait on that until they get down to the bottom there, by my house, and they go the way.
Sorry, I just saw it the other day and I was like.
That's what the council.
What was I thinking?
That's what the council's for, we're here to do the council's bidding.
Thank you.
I've never, have I been years and I've seen anyone get a ticket for it?
Have, have you seen the sign? Joe, no?
Yeah.
It's on the, it's on.
He hasn't let me out of the house for a few days.
It's on the 35 mile an hour sign, so as you come down around the corner, it's right below 35 miles an hour.
And it could just be my eyesight, but I'm telling you.
You're getting older.
I know.
Okay. Any other elected official comments?
I have a $250 ticket.
But make it bigger, can it, is it all the verbiage the same on there?
If you want people to crash and hit a horse.
All right. If there's no other comments tonight, meeting's adjourned at 7:17 PM.
I'm going to Lewis County to the January.